This conference will now be recorded.
I'll call this a meeting in City Commission's order. Everything together. I mean, I've been reading the agenda. Are you reading this, Jan? Okay. Several.
Mayor Roberts.
Here.
White.
Here.
Mr. Bo.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. Gaines.
Here.
Have you got everything out? I'm asking. Have you distributed everything to him?
Yes.
All right. Lito, can I?
All right, good prayer. So, Father Lord, we just thank you for this day, or God, we just thank you for the many blessings bestowed upon us, or God, we just praise, praise your name. But, Lord God, at this time, as we look at our budget, we pray for wisdom and foresight in the planning we're doing for this community. Or God, I just pray that decisions we make would be decisions that would be beneficial for our employees, beneficial to our citizens, and would bring glory to your name. Or God, we just thank you again for your son, Jesus Christ. Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Proud to lead you into the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute the flag, the state of Minnesota, the zealous temple, perfect friendship among united cultures. Hope to work for most of them, yes. Agenda has missed.
Sorry.
Okay. Let's get in a second for the agenda as written. Any suggestions, corrections, or adjustments? Have you got? Roll call, Jan?
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Gaines.
Good.
Mr. Bo.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Ginni. Will he leave us somewhere to go?
Yes.
All right, move to our non-action act. Oh. Ms. Kennedy, I get, I was, City Manager, I'm sorry.
Mister, Mister Mayor, members of the commission, what we would like to do is I will present some information, and then Ms. Kennedy will follow with additional information. And our goal tonight is to have that, have a discussion and to have a proposed budget for next meeting. Okay? All right. The first document that I want to reference is the one that, this one here that says 2022, 2023 fiscal year proposed budget. Hang on. I think I checked. There it is. Okay. So, what we did is we met with every, we met with every department director. We asked every supervisor a simple question. What would it take financially to run your department for next fiscal year? That's what we did. We asked every single supervisor, how much is it going to cost to run your department next fiscal year? So, these are the numbers that we came up with. All right. So, the first part, we have the motor vehicle department, the library, senior center, and animal services. And I know we have some of the supervisors here in the room, so if I made a mistake, please, please let me know. Okay. So, the motor vehicle department was pretty much cut and dry budget. Here it is. Now, keep in mind, that includes personnel, that includes their benefits, overtime, everything. Okay? So, I met with Maria, and she indicated 246,000, 229,000 to her department. Library, pretty much cut and dry as well. Her number is 318,000, 055.0. Now, when Ms. Kennedy presents, we're going to get into some specifics, so those numbers may move. Now, the senior center, what's interesting with the senior center, her number is 246,175. That's our part. That does not include what she gets from the state. So, if we add the 246,175 plus the state, we're looking at about 400 total amount, state and city. So, this is just our part. She has a state part.
190,000 and 610,000.
Okay.
That's a total, ma'am, I'm sorry.
From state and city.
Okay. That's total.
And then.
Okay. So, that's total.
470.
490,610.
Thank you. Yes. Now, under animal services, we have a total of 470,119. That number also includes adding an additional full-time personnel. Again, this is what take, this is what it takes to run the department. And as I, as I get into the party part, police department, we're going to have additional personnel. But, we have to fit the numbers into a specific total budget. But, again, Laura, that's correct. That's include, that includes a one addition, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, that was 473,119. All right. So, then the next column is the fire EMS, police, finance department, clerks office, HR, cemetery, administration, and planning and zoning. Now, the fire EMS, that's about 2.4 million dollars. And Skip, correct me if I'm wrong, but that does not include the revenues coming in.
No, sir.
That does not include the EMS revenues coming in, and that does not include the fire fund. Those are your two main revenues. So, that does not include it. Now, in his proposed budget, the 2.4 in there, he's asking for six additional personnel, correct? Is there? And two ambulances. In that, just keep in mind, in that 2.4, that's to hire six additional and two ambulances.
Is this, is this bringing back the three, the three that you froze or the three that you tried to look?
That's total. Yeah. But, again, it does not include fire fund, and it does not include revenues from EMS. Police came up to 2.6. And in that 2.6, it's to add two additional officers and six police cars, correct?
Or five police cars and one animal control unit.
Okay. That's included in there.
Right. And I would also add that both in the fire and police, there's a once every seven-year charge of $100,000 per department, right? The county radio operation.
None of them.
And that's both in both budgets.
Yes, sir.
That's in both budgets. Okay. Right. And then we have the clerks office, HR, and the cemetery came up to 504,835. Administration, that would include my office, and you're probably thinking, well, why is that such a high number? In there, I included an emergency fund for the city. That emergency fund was how much, do you mean? I think 150,000, if we can fund that emergency fund. Planning and zoning, 246,111,000, planning. Now, that planning and zoning also includes the person, additional person. When we had Brittany resign? Yes, we're going to conduct interviews this Friday. So, that, that includes that additional personnel. Okay.
Were we also added some other things in that, correct?
Planning and zoning. Yes, and I'm going to get.
Okay.
And that's up in the second page. Yeah. Water, wastewater department, about $1 million. And Mister Jerry, he's one of our lab techs, he was able to help us out, put that budget together.
On wastewater and water, can you also include on income versus expenses, like how much income? Like, say, a million dollars, whether we report, how much income do we get off?
And we're going to, yes, we're going to talk about that in the presentation of the revenues from our water and wastewater and solid.
This is pretty much an expense.
This is a, thank you, ma'am.
But, and it has a little bit of capital in it, because, like you said, ambulances, police units, there is some capital, but I consider capital items in this.
Right. Right. That's correct. Water department, 1.5. And then streets, parks, and recreation, 1.4. Now, with streets, parks, and recreation, the 1.4, that includes, he requested a grader, and there's another piece of equipment. So, there is some capital in there. So, the total here would be, proposed budget would be 11.4. But, we're going to get into other specifics, utilities, consulting. All right. On the second page, we have our 2022, 2023 fiscal year road projects. These are road projects. Now, the Main Street Road Project right now is at 1.7. That was pre-Jerry March of the 15th. That could go up. But, we do not have to, we do not have to pay that until four years after the project is, I know Crystal's not here, but my, what she told me is four years, but I'll verify.
Yeah, it's four years.
Now, we do have capitalally, we have the 850,000 plus the 434,000 capital.
434?
434,000, approximately.
We've already received, though, for this project. So, right now, right now, we're about 500,000 that we give. Sometime in the next four years, we begin paying for it.
Yes. Yes. Jackson Street, it was a total of about 507,960. We have to pay the 26,734. That's the match. So, when you see that number, that's the match by 107. The map grant. Now, the map grant, that's a planning grant, and we received 63,000 from DOT, and the match was 21,000. And then the transportation project fund, we have three projects. One is the micro slurry seal, that's multiple streets. Project two is the mill and overlay, multiple streets. And then project three is designed street sidewalk. So, total for those three projects would be 1.1. If we do, if it's approved, we have a, we have a meeting this Thursday, myself and Crystal, a DOT meeting. If approved, we will get the 1.1, we need a match of 50, approximately 50,000. And then the community block, development block grant, we're looking at 750,000 from the state, and that would be a match of 75,000. So, we're looking total proposed road, this, this does not include Main Street Road Project. The total proposed road budget would be 180,000. Now, what I would like to do, if we receive these funds, here's the issue, if we receive the funds, I would like to move quickly on these projects, spend the money so that we can go back to the state next year and request additional funding. So, what I would like to do is do an RFP and hire a contractor that can, that can work on all these projects, so we don't have to do it each individual. Now, I know the city of Hobbs does that, and I know the county, they have a contractor that they just submitted an RFP to hire somebody year-round to do work. So, I definitely would like to do that, submit a RFP, let the contractors submit their bids, and we go through procurement and bring somebody on board. Have somebody on board, so that if we do receive the funding, we can quickly take care of it. Again, I would like to spend the money once we get them. All right? So, that's a total proposed road budget, 180,000. Any questions on that? Good?
Effectively, it's about 2.5 million dollars is going to cost us 180,000.
Correct. Yes, sir. Okay. And then the next page, this was something that Ms. Kennedy submitted, I think it was a couple, about a month ago, correct, Ms. Kennedy? And this gave us a night, just a general overview of, it's the city of Lovington, 2021, 2020 budget numbers. Now, the previous administration indicated that we would receive about 21 million in revenues, and our expense would be 25. Now, year-to-date actuals is about 12 million dollars. And again, on this document, we're looking at about 15 million dollars. But, Ms. Kennedy will get into the specifics when it comes to the revenues. Now, all of you have probably seen, you've already taken a look at this document. Sorry for the big, big business, all people ahead. I need to kill trees. We're old, we can't see. There's one here, and he does.
Here. Oh, gee.
And, uh, like, Ms. Kennedy did a good job of putting this document together, and I think it's important that we have this document, because this indicates how much we pay, this is our debt. So, if you look at the first column, from water system improvements, fire station, ladder truck, magistrate court, capital improvements, and again, Kennedy, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're looking at a total of 106,000 per month on those specific kinds. And then on the bottom, we have what we give to, let's see, EDC, the Lita grant, Lovington Chamber, Main Street Museum, Wellness Center. So, the total is 9,375 per month. But, I think that's important, that we have that information as we move forward.
Per month on that, that's just the wellness.
That's, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's only one gun on a monthly basis. If you want to just look at annual numbers, it'd be on the second page. So, annual max payment per year, it's on the second column on the left. So, 1.4 in debt. And then skip those two, because those are the ones that are refinanced. And then 390, almost 398 for the contingencies.
One and three quarters, round figures.
Now, as, as I was looking at the numbers, and what I'm about to say might be controversial, but as City Manager, I'm obligated to give this information to the commission, and eventually, ultimately, the commission is going to make a decision. But, if you look at what we give to EDC, the Lita grant, I don't know of any other municipality in New Mexico that actually uses a tax that goes directly to them. And so, if we're looking at, we have to cut budget and so forth, the recommendation from the City Manager would be to revise the ordinance, or that money would not go to.
You can use that on some of your budgets.
Yeah, that's, that's one. The other option is not to fund the Chamber, Main Street, Museum, and to reevaluate the Norley Wellness Center contract. I, I think if it comes down to, or there are some critical decisions that we have to make, these are some of our major expenses.
This is the only chamber I've ever seen that's city supplies. Every other one is kind of like a lodge, and runs off their own funds.
So, with that said, I'll turn it over to Ms. Kennedy, so she can give her presentation.
Um, in that vein, rather than skipping ahead to the section, well, you'll notice in the documents that I've printed for you, that in addition to these actual hard money payments, we also pay expenses on behalf of those specific nonprofit, including utilities, phones. Those are the basics. There's some here and there. My utility manager let me know that there are a lot of times where they'll come in and use our printing and print things, if they need to make a lot of copies or things like that. So, there's going to be a lot of things that we can't even capture that are expenses that we pay to these nonprofit organizations in addition to these professional service agreements. So, to keep that in mind, I tried to capture that in the budget, so we can back that back out based on the decisions, but they're, they're so far in the split in the numbers. So, I have a total recap page, should have been the top page of your handout. So, the new descriptions is the top, total revenue and total expense.
Is it this document here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Already got that one?
It's the one in portrait, there's everything.
Yeah. So, what this is, it's a culmination of the general fund departments, and then the, what I got basically is the enterprise ones. For the most part, these other ones that you see are, they wash themselves. So, as a good example of that, LEF. We have that LEF set aside, and everything that goes in there during the fiscal year needs to come out during the fiscal year, so that will zero itself out. That will be the, the goal. And so, I haven't filled all that in just yet, because I still have a couple little things to work out, all these, these little funds, but these are your expense departments, and then your, your revenue generating enterprise funds. And they're still a little bit incomplete, especially solid waste, water, wastewater. I don't have, those are attachments in your deals, those specific funds, and I don't have all of the, I don't have all the cells building. So, I'm waiting on additional expenses from, mostly from Ron, since now he's having to do wastewater, water. I tried to, I tried to take what was given to Dr. Martinez and plug it in as well versus the numbers that I had, but I don't have detail on that. So, I'm not all of them. So.
Can you step that percentage in? So, on water, you're saying that income, total revenue versus expenses were off by 1.5, almost 1.5 in the year?
Yes, we have, I don't anticipate, this is something I was telling Dr. Martinez, I don't anticipate that any of our enterprise funds at the current status will support itself without having to take additional from general fund. So, that bottom line is going to be important, to see the whole picture. The 12.8, I feel is a pretty good number. We can talk a little bit about the breakdown of that number and where I generated the information. So, I can probably use a little bit of feedback from that, just based on how I estimated some numbers, big one being grocery receipts. There is going to be additional monies in taxes for the cannabis legislation, but we received a, we received correspondence from the DFA to not budget for that. They want to have a full quarter of revenues before they're expecting us to budget for that. They created a new fund that we're supposed to mimic. So, when that time comes, that's where that'll go. I'm under strict instruction to not budget for that. So, there, there's, you know, possibly some additional grocery receipts income in the form of the cannabis money, but we wouldn't know what that is. And so, what I kind of did, if you want to go to the first page of the general fund, that's the one that's in landscape mode. And the first, the very first page of possibly two pages, is the revenues. That's how it's broke out in general fund revenues. And then there's no specific expenses for general fund, it's all just, you know, adjustment numbers and such, and then it breaks down into the departments. But, for grocery receipts general, I have 7.4 listed here, and that's based on, I took the lowest of 12-year, which is 6.1 million. The 12-year average is 7.7, and the median was 618 million. Or 618,000, so that would be a monthly median. In case you're not picking up on that, the MM stands for million, M is just thousand, so that's banker speak right there. But, the 7, 7.4, we took the, I think the median number per month, 618, times 12 months, so that's how I got that number. And I have that listed out over 12 years, if anybody wants to look at that specifically, to maybe pick out a year that might be more similar to this coming year, because the 12-year lowest was last year, 6.1 total grocery receipts. So, that really pulled our average down, not really, you know, pulled down the median and everything. So, that number could be bigger, but that's a conservative number.
Now, when you say that was last year, fiscal year?
Yeah, last, it would have been fiscal year ending in 2020. 2021, yeah, 21.
Okay. So, it would have been effectively, yeah, 7.1, 2020 through 6.30, 2021.
And that, this number came from the RFP 500. So, that, and, and in doing the audit with the Lita stuff, I actually did confirm those deposits, and those are accurate numbers. It's just the allocations that were incorrect. So, that is actual collected money. And keeping in mind that that is after the intercept payments. And intercept payments would be on your debt schedule, they would be your fire station, ladder truck, and the water, capital improvement. So, those are the three that are intercepted. And so, the only, the only two from here would be your water improvements, and that would be based on guidance from the commission. I would recommend to take that out of the water department. And then the magistrate court will actually have its own fund. The monies going in will be the lease payments generated from the AOC, and the monies going out will be that debt schedule, or the debt payments, and including utilities on the magistrate court, and supplies, cleaning supplies, and then janitorial services. So, that fund will gradually, and I mean very gradually, probably just a couple thousand a month will grow in expenses, revenues minus, minus expenses. So, that net number will grow just ever so slightly every month. And so, that's also one of those funds that I didn't print, because it's going to basically zero itself out. And then that money will just have to be left in that fund for unexpected expenses or, or whatnot. We really won't be gaining a whole lot on that lease, so.
Did we discuss it the last meeting? Was that when we brought up that we were, they were not due the interest payment that we had received?
No, I haven't updated anyone on that. So, I did, after multiple attempts of contacting someone at the NFA, I did send out an email. I was contacted by Brad at that cycle place, the, the individual that helped us put all these together. And Brad had told me that that was incorrect, that that was not, that invoice was not to be, should not have been sent out. I still have yet to have an NFA individual admit to that mistake, but he says it was a mistake, and that the capitalized interest is the figure that is used to pay the interest during the construction portion. So, that is not to be paid out of our general fund until sometime that we have a tenant, and we have revenues generated to pay that expense. So, thank goodness that I didn't just pay the invoice, because in NFA, they're difficult, and I don't know if we would have ever got it back. They probably would have stuck it in our, you know, one of our funds that's kept for debt service and stuff like that, so.
So, are we being penalized or not, as of yet, or?
Excuse me?
Are we being penalized as of yet?
I haven't got an answer on that either. We had about 400,000 in past due payments, according to them, and I asked them specifically for some sort of an accounting on that. And the only person being somewhat responsive at the NFA is Laura, and she's actually the person that's in charge of the advances, and she's behind in two advances. So, that tells you who their shining star is. But, basically, we're okay on that at the current time. We don't have that additional 25,000 in debt service to be made on a monthly basis. Their best two ladies just retired, they're in our training. And everybody's like, we hope we can do.
And everybody's like, we hope we can do this cause they've done.
So, so yes, the only two sizable debts and not, not contingent debts, but contractual debts that we need to determine the source payment would be the water and the capital improvement.
Mr. Martinez, right here on your water department and water office. I've seen your expenses here and your expenses say 274,000 out of 15, or out of 20, I guess, first out of 20.
So I have, have taken the utility department and pulled it out. It was at one point fine, an attempt was made to split some of those expenses out between the three departments. It really didn't get done that way. So it mostly was just being taken out of water. So it is now its own standalone department under general fund. They're just a new expense department. They're just basically money takers. They don't represent one of the three departments they take money for. And that is the way that the, the DFA handles it. So I pulled that out.
Yeah. And what I was getting at is that we just recently went up on a range of over a year ago to counteract our, our fee us being in the red. And we're estimating a surplus of about 300,000 in that year. And that's what I'm trying to figure out where is the loss at in, in revenue that, that, that where are we off 1.4 in the year? I mean, to me, just rough in my head, I can see the numbers, we're writing off 1.4 in the year. We're off just water, wastewater should even be break even. I think we should be making money because we have to turn around in turn. We got equipment upgrades, new stuff. So we have to make some sort of profit there. And that is to counteract equipment failures and there's nothing off right, but new year round. So we, we've got to figure something out then too, because heck, we wouldn't take that out of general funds, especially 1.4 and wastewater right here. As you mentioned, what is flowing water right here? And then, and then even, even to include the ambulance, where are we going along there? The numbers, 3.5, 1.1, by this $3 million out of general fund plus the other. That three should be, I, I have to say these three right here, just the loan should be. If it was break even, I'd say, hey, have to figure out how to make money. There's no way I can accept these almost $4 million loss right here. So we're going to have to, Dr. Martinez, we're going to have to figure out where we're going along here. But it just, that's directed out of the general fund that we're losing. We're having to subsidize something that should be, should be break even or not making money. Because how are we going to pay for upgrades?
So correct me if I'm wrong, I'm looking at this document here, the first one.
Yeah, looking at this versus expenses off this.
And it indicates that total revenue for water department was 1.9, correct?
Yeah, and then total.
And then the expense was 1.4.
So it's all by one, okay. So it's minus the expense in line. Or is that total expenditures would have been 1.9, well, probably 2 million versus 1.5. So you're all, you're all 500,000, right?
I mean, they made that.
They made about, correct?
This is their revenue and this is their.
Oh, they made about 21.
They made 5.1?
Yeah.
But how is it, they made 5.1 of this total revenue? Okay, 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 I guess. I kept thinking that was a loss. I was reading wrong. So total.
Yeah. So water, water revenues is the 1.9.
Okay, so these are total, because this, we, total expense.
But other statements were correct.
If you look at solid waste and wastewater.
Okay, expense, okay. So, yeah, it probably been nice to make another bracket so we know where we're.
Right.
Where, because, yeah, red and black and what, what the profit? Because I was thinking, hell, I said, well, yeah, that's what we're making.
Because if you look at solid waste, our revenues is 231,000, right? And 400, 200. But how much do we pay to waste management?
Yeah.
Well, and that, I'll need some guidance. Those need to be fixed anyways because I see a lot of problems with those bills.
So wastewater, we did not.
But we won't be paying the larger, we pay about 160 a month. But we won't be paying the larger amount because those are the big roll offs that are at the, at the solid waste. Yeah. So.
And I know wastewater, yeah, wastewater, that has to be.
These, and these revenues came, so I had to derive revenues from Wendy's system. So they're on the INCODE 9. Though the INCODE 9 has all of the breakdowns. It just comes into our INCODE 10 as a total number, as a total figure. And so I can't break it down. So I had to get those from Wendy. And so she pulled these, these figures for me on solid waste, wastewater and water. And, you know, I, I feel like those are low, low numbers too. But I also know that, for example, our waste, our waste management contracts gotten completely out of hand. And I did give them a heads up that we needed to sit down and go over those. Because they are charging us for a lot of things that, of services that we're getting.
And you can't even do a new trash can.
Yeah.
For our wastewater, we increased the rate center, as somebody else said, last year and a half, but we should be making.
Yeah. And our, our wastewater rates are higher than our water rates, like on a, like a gallon basis, per gallon basis. But we don't have, we have such a big drop between what our water usage is and what our wastewater usage is. There's a big drop between those two. And so even though we have a higher per gallon rate, we're not seeing, and Ron, I mean, he, he was translating to me, so he would better speak on this. But I, I think it was something like only 40% getting to the wastewater plant.
No, it's only getting charged.
Charged.
On the, on the revenue or on their system. Because effectively, if we've got 10 gallons of fresh water that goes to house A, then you're, from what I'm understanding is we're only billing four gallons of that 10 as soup.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, that's what I'm understanding you.
So 60% maybe. I, because I would have to have Ron speak to that. But, but, you know, in any event, these are the numbers that, that came from the actual collections on the bills and broke out between the three departments.
Yeah. Cause I would like to see, stepping back, now, now, we're making 500 with water. But I'd like to see where we're going along with wastewater and ambulance. That's, that's just such a big, some 500,000. Happening per ambulance is like 600.
Well, these can't be, I mean.
Do you have all their perks in here on this number?
Yes, I printed the specifics for those enterprise funds. So after you get past those landscape pictures, you should hit some more portraits. And those are the five enterprise funds under that. So you'll see wastewater, water specific, wastewater, water, ambulance, senior.
Now, on the ambulance, and I know Chief has brought this to my attention. So on ambulance, we have total revenue of 850,000, total expense of 1.4. He has a list of people that have not paid. Chief, can you elaborate on that and what's it total now? And we need to, there is a specific process. I know, I know the mayor brought this to my attention.
Sir, we're talking about the answer from the.
How much, yeah, people.
Okay, so, just one step on that before we start. I remember on an audit finding it was a million dollars that we not paid last audit. It was a bad.
Things even more.
It said something about our ambulance department was not functioning correct because she stated that it was over a million dollars and lost revenue due to. And it either wasn't accounted for or it wasn't accounted for on books that we had for million dollar loss in that, that ambulance department.
But we didn't have any.
And it wasn't. No, no, this was during the previous audit, not 20. Yeah, the previous audit. And it showed that it was $1 million. It was a big audit finding that it was a 1 million, not like there was.
So, okay, the finding is, is that it carries the money off. But what they said is we need to, to generate an allowance on that. Effectively, you can't write off that debt, that we're not allowed to do that. But we can put in allowance where we, we think we're only going to collect a certain amount of that. And that was what hit nothing. This is already a finding.
Yeah. And I think what I'm trying to get at, bottom line is how can we manage them two sexes to not be all $1 million combined in wastewater? Or we have to go back and figure out what, what we messed up on our last rate increase on ambulance? What are we going to have to do to manage to keep that number down? Because with inflation and GRT is not going to be any more than what we're getting now. How we can accommodate plus accommodate for the remainder of the budget we're having. If we're giving this away is what I'm saying. It's like, you're giving 1.1.
Are you calling operating transfers in on ambulance? What's that?
Oh, the transfers in is just a, that's just the finance thing of how we're general ordering in and out of these pool accounts. So that's why it shows that the zero for everything.
Well, because don't they get money from the state and all that? So revenue, all you have is ambulance charges. Like you're not giving them any perk money or anything as well.
So, okay, so ambulance has an EMS grant and that's a separate fund. And that's one of those, everything that comes in goes out. So I've got 42,100 on that. So pretending, bringing in 42,100, pulling out 42,100. And so for example, Skip took 20,000 of the Striker contract and put it out of that grant. He took 5,000 of training and put it into that grant. And then equipment, shared vehicles, which is the Lucas devices for 17,000. And so he's already taken what he could to use up the EMS funding out of the EMS.
And that's the only extra funds they get for EMS, is that?
Okay. So here's another conversation. We get 300,000 from the county. The county doesn't specify how we use it. We have a ordinance resolution that said, it doesn't specify dollar, dollar. But it says this money is shared services for fire, EMS, senior and library. So that's something else I need guidance from the commission on is how is that 300 going to be split? And is my drive part of that decision?
And then the money you get for the air conditioning hall is considered fire money, not EMS money?
I'm just trying to see where we. So yes, the, it all has to be kept separate. So there's, there is fire money and there's EMS money. So the fire.
No, that's good. No, you don't have to say. I'm just trying to see if there's another place he gets money from on ambulance and just charges.
Yeah, there, there's a little wiggle room still left in fire grant. Let's see if they have to pay the ladder truck grant. I've got about 43,000. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's tough on Skip in the first place because he has to try to determine what salaries come out of ambulance and what comes out of fire, even though he's got people.
But I mean, it's just, it, it's hard to sit over here and say, yeah, we'll do this budget when you know he's a negative 626 on ambulance. But if there's like 43,000 sitting here and 20 there, you know, it would make him look a lot better here if he was like 100,000. Yeah, that's kind of what David's asking me. But if we have all this money in other areas and we don't see here, we don't know. So we think that we're like a billion in debt.
Well, the, the issue with that is anything that's in this fire grant money has to be fired. Is that right?
Anything in the fire grant has to be safety, anything for fire tools, fire equipment. That's why I use it for the ladder truck. All that stuff comes out of that grant. Striker is your EMS, that has come out of EMS grant.
So I mean, the only, the only other thing to do would be pull more out of EMS and put it into fire. But that would be taking it out of this hand and putting it in this hand because it's still going to come out of general.
So what I've got is we're averaging about 450,000 a year, or I'm sorry, 850,000 a year that we are bringing in from insurance. From our outside billing agency, that's about what we're bringing in a year. That's just on ambulance. So our fire, the way it works is we get our state fire income, which is the state fire grant. And then that also account, you know, for the buildings, the different money we get. And to add on to what she was talking about, about that 300,000 from the county. So we only got 250,000 dollars a year from the county. When we got the ladder truck, they had another 50,000 on that. Said 50, this 50,000 is to go to your ladder truck. But it's not in, broke down. Even though that's what they said, this 50,000 that we're having on top of this 250 is for your ladder truck, not plus bigger than that. So, but like she said, it's not broke down.
She just had you at a negative 6.30 right here. So I'm just, you know, trying to help you look better off.
Well, but that also includes, that 6.30 includes two ambulances.
Right.
Yes. And the, the two ambulances alone are 600,000 dollars.
And that's what you're requesting your new budget for.
Yes, sir.
And I think it needs to be separated because that way, no. What I'm trying to get at is like, when we see the numbers, I'm going to say, how is, how are you, how is Dr. Martinez managing this staff with their departments? And let's say, for example, just to use the example, you're continuing to operate in the red. How is Dr. Martinez addressing that? Because we, and that way I see it here because if there's a separate expense, okay, fine. I mean, I, it brings this number down. So it shows better management. And when I'm seeing, I hear something, where the hell, how are we losing that?
So what I submitted was I've got four budgets that I have to deal with. I've got the EMS budget, the fire budget, the EMS grant budget and the fire state fire fund budget. And that's what I submitted was each budget separately.
You're good. I mean, it's like senior center. We have them with a negative 53.5. So I'm just, you know, I don't want it to, like if you come to zero or negative 1,000 at the end of the year, okay, good. But that's a whole lot of money to go. Yeah, let's do it.
So what I've proposed is a 399 capital budget fund. I don't have anything in there, but that is where I propose to put things like what Crystal provided for the capital improvement type stuff, the capital purchases stuff. I feel like it needs to be pulled out and separate. What, what you're seeing here is a more of a high level view of total expense and including wish list items. So that's obviously going to be the first place we cut is the wish list items. When we're looking at approving these numbers. And so, you know, there is some monies in there to make up for the ambulance purchases, the hindrance grants. But that's actually been pulled out on that actual line item. So if you're looking at the 505 ambulance fund, you'll see on that very bottom line, there's the equipment vehicle number. You know.
And you can always.
And that's going to be to your discretion is, and, and also, you know, the only other thing to take into consideration is that 300,000. Where does it go? So does it make up this ambulance loss? Or do we, or do we try to, to recoup some funds and try to put in an estimated revenue from monies that we could recoup over the next year?
Well, that's what I say. You could put an item on your budget. It doesn't mean you're going to spend that money until it's approved by the board. You know, we can say it's a board, where not anything above 5,000 has to come forward. Let's say for instance, Chief Miranda asked for five units per unit. We, he could put that in his budget and it's in his budget because you never know what, you know, something could surprise us. But it's in the budget, but doesn't mean you're going to spend it. So. So, you know, I know we talked about before, let's say we're budgeting two million, but reality, we only have one million income. Doesn't mean, but doesn't mean we're gonna spend two million at the, by the end of the year. But this board, because if anything, it's above twenty thousand, just to ensure that, it's just like for the ambulance. In, in six months, he may create enough revenue to buy it. Six months comes, Dr. Martinez comes to the board, says, hey, chief and I have come up with that we can buy it. And it's in the budget, but doesn't mean we have to spend it. That's what I'm saying, we don't have to get it down to the penny to where our budget's gonna match what we've got. Income versus expenses, because you can always add that expense, doesn't mean you spend it. But it has to be in the budget, because if you don't have it in the budget, I don't know if you can add to the budget six months down.
It doesn't have to be in the budget.
Yeah.
Okay. The way the county does it is, they do an operation budget, both revenue and expense. Okay, it is recommended that those two items, that the expenses are not larger than your revenue. Okay, so what they do is, all right, they, they come up with a revenue budget. And then, then they adjust their expense budget to fall at least equal or less than that. Then if you have, you can develop a capital budget. I don't suggest that, because it just makes, if you have revenues that are above what you, you're expecting, then you can choose to create reserves with them, you can expend them on other items. You don't, you just have, you just have to follow within the guideline. So if you have the money, you can buy other things, whatever it is, we can expense it to whatever. So that was the reason I, that she and I talked about, about coming up with a, a capital fund that has all of these, but it's not, it, it doesn't go as an expense on our budget. It is just, okay, these are items that we need to address, and we need to figure out how we're going to fund them. But we've gotta cover operations first.
Yeah, so like, yeah, so let's create a, a reality budget instead of adding, you know, like, capital out, like, for instance, the chief Miranda's five units. Capital out, like, says it's, the money's available, because, I think, because that's the way you're gonna, that's the way, and I know Mr. Bo, as you mentioned before in previous, I mean, that's the way we're gonna see how Dr. Martinez, it hits that, managing everything. And it's gonna be hard for us to see that if you've got capital money involved in that. So either we put just a capital fund, like the mayor said, make it simple. This is our capital, this is the money we got. And I know it goes in certain practices, doesn't go all combined, because he's, he has to create, you know, what for, whatever. But I think it would, it will draw a better picture for us to see. So we got our income statement in three months, our quarter statement. I can say, okay, this is our income, this is our expenses, hey, we're doing, we're managing. Dr. Martinez mentioning the status of management, it's easy for me to read that. Instead of saying, damn, we're still in the hole, one million dollars, I'm only six months into this. In reality, I need to look at the details, saying that you got five units in there. And it makes, David, Chief Miranda, Luke Beck, just, he has five units in there, and it's really, it's showing a picture, but you have to go into detail with it. And I'm really making it simple, income versus expenses, and then capital out, play funding. That's simple math, right? I can read that real quick at a, for a city meeting, instead of what the mayor pointed out, well, this, 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 and that. Didn't even have to show me more dogs to read, and I really do simple math, income versus expenses. Funny, they, they, they put their budget, they got minus five units, do it. I think, I, I think we must end.
Yes.
Make it a something.
Yeah, because like, right now, it looks like, well, we need to get rid of two shifts of firemen to make them back to normal, to zero. And, and then, and you know what I mean? It just, if you're just trying to.
You have your budget, and you have your wish list.
Yeah.
Exactly, just simple, you get reading.
Right, Mr. Mayor.
Or something more like.
I don't think it's a wish, wish list, I, I really don't like that term, I know she uses it. Let me just say something. When it comes to firing EMS, burning out of people, we don't have enough staff. Our budget, our overtime budget is outrageous. We need additional staff to operate. It's, it's, that's, that's the bottom line. If we wanna be efficient and provide that quality service to the community, we definitely need additional staff. And we have to, if we, we have to move quickly on purchasing ambulances, because we're looking six months to a year out, if we order today. And it's something that is needed.
Right, they have to.
With, with the police department, I know a couple of weeks ago, they're pulling parts from one vehicle to another, just to give you a whole run. And, and so that is something, I don't see it as a wish list, I, it's something that we need. I don't, I don't wanna tell the community, if you call the police and say, okay, they'll be there in thirty minutes, he's on his bicycle.
Right.
And they get some jumper cables from us.
Yeah, I just.
And I think Dr. Martinez, when you come back to that part of portion of it. So when we receive the one point four with the COVID money, the relief fund, maybe we could utilize that funding to provide this as a, as a job or say, okay, we utilize this money.
Right.
The one point four, he can come to us and say, hey, I have this one point one, so we don't have to pull it from our general fund. So we don't have to pull it from everything else, let's just pull it from this one point four. Get the units, the, the, both chief, police, and the, and the, and the state. And that would, it made me feel better if we pulled it from there, because I don't, I know that the, the general fund can support this. I know that, I don't want it spoiled, because I wanted to, I want to show a heavy.
Is there, is there anywhere where we can cut to support? It comes down to the other.
But remember, it all falls back, right? Because you've got four that are in one section, and it has to go in that bracket. It can't go from an overall, generalized, all the departments. But if all the departments are, it can't just go into one ticket, because, correct me if I'm wrong. It, each, there's four, like, four that have to support one another, and another bracket. You can't grab one from here, throw it up here to another, right? Right?
Right, there, there's certain funds that absolutely can't cross, but these are isolated from those. The certain things that you can't be moving money is, is like need for the senior citizens, the, the fire and EMS grants. We, our LIPF funds. Yes, but there are some that, that you're allowed to. But I'm, I'm trying to make each fund, like I said, wash itself. Only these enterprise funds would ever, in theory, take from general fund. Ideally, they wouldn't have to. And so it would be extremely easy to pull these numbers out of, of police, for example, and put in a different fund to, to the capital expenditure fund, or the COVID fund. We just ask the managers to get us a full picture of everything, yeah. Which, there's no way that we can pull personnel out of those expenses, them in a different fund. So the personnel does need to stay in, within each department's expense. Because there's about ten, man, that's probably seven or eight expense accounts that deal with personnel exclusively. So those can't be taken out and put anywhere. But yes, capital expenditures, that, that was my proposal, was to put it in, you know, in capital budget of three ninety-nine, or just a COVID fund, just me on what's eligible. We've determined that, that that's where a bunch of the wastewater improvements are gonna come from, is the COVID fund. And that is an eligible expense. So, but for, for tonight's purposes, we left them in each specific department, just to kind of get an idea of where each department stood on it, so, so many they get, right?
Like, for example, and I'm correcting what I'm wrong, but what the auditors are telling me, like, the cheese, cheese plant, we're paying five hundred and fifty thousand out of our own budget, and that cheese plant is not even ours. Why are we paying that? I'm still confused on the cheese plant.
Yeah, we, we make that debt service. We're the guarantors, not the borrowers. So we're not the owners, the EBO, we make the debt.
Out of low gas.
I believe, no. General, out of work.
You make it out of low gas. You're supposed to make it out of low gas.
Yes, I, that, that was the issue, it wasn't always taken out of the correct ones. So that, those are all adjustments that I'm gonna have to make.
Okay.
Yes, back from where it wasn't. The lead up, I thought it made me through it.
Okay.
And we just.
Let's go back to this page. This is, this is your first page that we've been on. Okay, first of all, this is the expected revenue and expenses for this year, is that all right?
The, the only major ones that are missing is some departments included utilities. I haven't had a chance to go back and check all the utility numbers. But for the most part, especially under the general fund section at the top, I'm confident in those numbers.
Okay, so the general fund, which is funded by GRT. Okay, you came up with nine million, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven point two or four, what, seven point four, wasn't it, come from GRT?
Yes.
That nine million, two hundred.
Yes.
The other comes from?
All sorts of things, page one of your landscape.
Landscape, okay.
That's definitely.
That's the general fund.
Another big, well, and I needed to question about this, though, another big number in there was the three hundred shared from the county, which I already discussed. Two hundred and twenty-eight is our oil and gas, rent, royalties, and leases. But Commissioner Trigillo had brought it to my attention that we had a saltwater disposal well from, from Vanguard. We have not been able to locate anything on that. So I don't know if we haven't been collecting on that, or we haven't been invoicing, certainly. The girls thought maybe it could be a different aim, Grizzly, and there was another one throughout, out, they looked for those and didn't find anything. So I think there's a lot of those sort of things out there that we haven't.
May I make a suggestion on that, before you go any further? I'd get with Patrick on that.
Patrick.
Patrick, yes.
Patrick will be your person to do on that, stick him on there, because if they ain't been paying, that, that's, and now, if they plug the well, that's money by-bye. But if the well is still in operation, and we have not received anything, I would stick Patrick on that.
Okay, Ron kind of thought maybe it didn't plug, but that's a good suggestion.
But I think, I recalled it, we did receive a check, because we requested punch, we got a check, and Mr. Dobbs, our, the previous treasurer, maybe ask him, because I thought we had received a check, because we went after him, because lack of payment. And I recall it, we get a check, and I wanna say, it was something like Grizzly or something like that. But the, the sad part about it is, it was a one-page doc. That's all we found, and that was the only reason we went after, because we had this one-page contract doc. And we went after him, and sure enough, they thought they owned it, they didn't own it, but said we don't. And then they, but they were just, I think they were just loving us off of it. And we said, no, we don't. And then they sent us a payment, and I think they sent us a broken bill for a hundred thousand, that's happened time. But we'll give it to Mr. Dobbs too.
We don't know.
We haven't received a payment since then, it's been an entire year. I have, it's been an entire year since we have not received a payment.
So the way I understand that disposal well, is that was set up in the seventies or eighties with Rice Engineering.
Yes, sir.
And over the years, it's changed names.
Yes, sir.
But every time they changed names, we came up with another contract.
Yes.
That renewed that, and we get so many cents per barrel of disposal fee. Rice Engineering did us a great figure many years ago. So that would be, like I said, Patrick should know of that, and that would be the best way to handle that, yeah.
Let me name the ones that they found. So we have apparently something from Constructors, which is twelve fifty a month, Key Energy, twelve hundred a month.
That's the, that's the property up there.
Okay, Ramirez and Sons, four fifty-five a year.
That's.
I think that's that lease property out there, where they got their pressure.
Okay. Contango, sixteen thousand a month.
Tango.
Tango, that's the one, so.
That would be.
Does that ring in any bells?
But that'd be, that would be somewhere about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, depending on the disposal rate. So that would be something to look into.
Because I know, when I recall, is when, when we went after, they had, somebody had bought them out. And the, yeah, with the Tango, it could have been them, but Grizzly bought them out, and they, and Tango didn't let them know that they.
C-O-N-T-A-N-G-O. And I've remembered the call, but.
But there's, there's both of them one off, I mean, I, I didn't have that, meaning it's on a need on it, but, yes. You know, maybe get with Mr. Dobbs on that, I would get with him. He had a, he's the one that sent the letter, I think Patrick was involved in the letter as well. So both should, should recall something on it. And I recall us getting a payment, but that was back in.
Because new mayor was with Vanguard the last time he screamed at me. And then I think they sold out, Grizzly sounds familiar.
Twenty twenty-one. Yeah, Grizzly Energy and Contango. Contango and Independence, I need to correct that energy.
But there's just, there's a lot of things like that, that, you know, we need to know what to invoice, who went invoice, how often invoice. And hopefully, we're capturing some of that with this process. But anything that doesn't end up on this budget, on the revenue end, that we are able to find, locate, and collect, it's gonna be additional, so that's, it's a good thing that we're not underestimating. But, so the other big numbers in that section are, we get co-op shares from the utility companies, about two hundred thousand in there. And a couple other taxes here and there, property tax.
We have a bunch of problems in terms of success or to.
So you can kind of see the breakdown of that age.
There was a payment of a hundred thousand.
Grizzly, this, this chapter.
Maybe go back in your. Five hundred, a hundred thousand dollar payment, it's a one-time payment, so maybe get that, maybe any additional thing.
But yeah, next, Grizzly bought out some properties from Vanguard, and then they were chapter eleven.
Exactly.
And then, so they may have sold out to someone else, so we'll listen to.
But going back to the budget, I, I personally, I'd like to see the three vote, that income, expenses to cap, uh, town.
Or you can get all the revenue written down.
Okay, you're working, okay.
Yeah.
By the way, it's easy math.
It's like you have fire cost this much, but then you didn't plug in any of the fire numbers over here, or, you know, I mean, just, if we could have like all the pluses and all the minuses, so we can see a bottom number.
Okay, well, like I said, those are, those will mostly cancel themselves out, but.
I'm not comfortable.
I was just mostly concerned with the, the enterprise.
Right now.
I could just take a couple of what the city manager said. If I wanted to make a wish list, I would have asked for ten units, I only asked for one. No, it's not kind of.
I want you to have what you want, and we need, and that's why I wanna see real numbers, and not just, oh, this washed this up. Uh, you know, like, we need to see actual, because that's why where we're at, everyone's mad.
I think just, because it's, the public wants to read achievements, is that are rather than read, hey, they're doing good versus income versus expense. They're doing good, they're managing right. And then this is the extra stuff, so when they say, okay, we have a surplus of a million dollars. Now we can use this to fight five units, and it makes us, I think it makes a clear message to the public that we're managing better versus, I won't figure it out there. Look at that, they're in the negative, you know, just saying, two years prior to that. Yeah, exactly, this is, yeah.
Yes.
Because I mean, we've been, I mean, we're, we're on the rebuilding stage, and you know you're gonna have, you know, it's not, and then plus our, our income versus what we, income of the last two years. Heck, we're only getting half GRT sometimes, you know, so, so. This is what we see.
Like, yeah, kind of like the forty-two thousand, you know we have it, so we could have put it right in here, and then put what came out of it here. And I know it washed this, but it still looks good to show the money they get, instead of just saying, oh, eight hundred and fifty thousand, and then they're gonna be negative six. It just looks better.
Mayor already gave the, well, I guess.
Well, I'm more than.
So, but again, just.
So, and I know Chief Miranda's is the same, some of our stuff has gone up, one, you have to take into account, half of last year, our hours were cut, our pay was cut. Plus, our parrot is going up this year another half percent, and by, like, by department by the, by two thousand twenty-six, I mean, we're going to be paying in twenty-one point two percent of our income to parrot. I mean, they're going to be at nineteen point eight.
Being kind of like, you know, period, it's not the same.
I think, from, from me personally, when I look at PERA, and I know we've got, well, we can sell contracts out now, that might be some, the city's going to have to start coming into, I know a lot of companies, like oil field companies do that, because the PERA, you pay it, the city's going to pay for that for the rest of the entire thing, and just like Skip brought up, it goes up, it goes up on our end, takes away from our GRT. We have to look at from a management standpoint, how can we counteract that? We're going to have to start contracting services out, but we don't have to pay for all this insurance, all this extra dividends that will happen, because that PERA never ends, it, all it does is go up every year, and our GRT is uh, is not going to support, it's not, would cover inflation, cover anything else? It, and not to say we're going to contract these, these two departments, I'm just naming like smaller departments, other departments where we could easily contract them, it's not from CDs, the department contracted them, obviously. I'd rather see, get what we can get done, but bring in on something different, you know, I know the oil field does it, because when the economy goes down, the oil field goes down, they cut all their all their, anybody that is contracted labor, and they contract everything, from safety to, to consultants, everything, so when oil drops, they just have their labor force, but it's, they don't have to continue to pay. It's like, hey, they're all consultants, and they're gone, and it's something we may have to look into to, to counteract, because cities growing, but not going to the extent they were growing GRT. Our, our income has not changed, in the last ten years, our income's not changed, but the cost of living's gone up, inflation's gone up, payroll's gone up, everything's gone up, but our GRTs have not gone up for ten years. In ten years, if we calculate, we're still averaging the same GRTs that we averaged ten years ago, but yet everything else has gone up, but we haven't, so how are we going to manage the next fiscal year to counteract that? That's what we got to look at, we.
So the bottom line is where do we cut?
Yeah, where do you cut?
So, so can I ask a question? So, everybody on this page here?
We are now.
I'm wasting up where he goes, so I just want to make sure I understand. So let's look on annualized or annual. This is, I'm assuming that you averaged what we did over a twelve-month period, and we're going to spend you know, revenues, expenses, uh, we're going to overspend by four hundred and ten thousand dollars based off of actual what came in and what went out, which is basically ten million dollars less than what was budgeted. Correct?
Correct.
So, let me give it to you guys right here, good job. If you only pissed off four hundred thousand dollars over a year with the shitty year that we, pardon my phrase there, with the extremely bad, good job, excellent job. Because we've had more water leaks than we've ever had, we've had more mechanical breakdowns, and we're working with some hideous equipment, I want to give you a heads up, that's, that's phenomenal. So what do you propose that next year's total budget's going to be? I know you based it off of seven point, or, or is it, you based it off of, or sixty point, six point six, two hundred and six, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars a month off of grocery receipts. Based that off of, so you're, you're saying roughly the same fifteen, sixteen million dollar range is where we're going to be at, based off of your guesstimate, guesstimates?
Yeah, well, I think probably it would be tough to squeeze another million out of that twelve point eight, but we could, just by changing the GRT figure that we're using, um, we could make a, a dent in that, but I don't want to.
I'm just saying, you said we received fifteen million dollars on a downturn year last year, right?
Uh, well, revenues.
Revenues fifteen million.
Yeah, by the end of the year.
So we got fifteen, before you, I want to make sure that her apples and your apples are the same.
Right.
Because I don't think they are.
Okay, I'm just basing it off of.
I know, I realize that, but, okay, she is, let me make sure I'm understanding it, because this fifteen million that you are reading.
Right.
Okay, there, uh.
Still got.
You have to enter the payments out of it, you've got to take all of that, the twelve point eight million that she is talking about doesn't put any of that in there, right?
So this piece here.
Right, so.
This doesn't have the intercept payments, or it does have the intercept?
Does not, all that is, is revenue.
Well, it.
And it doesn't, okay.
It reduced our GRT by that much, so it's, it's out of there, I've got to make a.
So you're saying that, so you're saying that this number is the real number, twelve million dollars.
Twelve point eight is all the revenue I've been able to find.
And this is, this is garbage then?
Um, that's not true, but we. No, it's, it's more actual numbers on a trajectory, um.
Okay, fair enough, trajectory, let's run with that, let's run with.
But like I said, I can, I can go with a higher GRT, because our GRT's been going up.
Because six fifty is, six fifty is a, a stable average, okay, we'll just agree that that's been, over the last ten years, we've been able to achieve that. And due to the fact that you have the magistrate running, you have Main Street running, we have, what's the other building project that's going on? There's, uh, there's another couple of building projects going on, as long as we have the, got the.
Jackson.
Jackson, yeah.
Plus the county.
The county's got stuff going on, so typically in those deals, we have a higher GRT, which is a great thing, because we need it. So if we ran with fifteen, sixteen million dollars, I, I feel that we would be very close in our numbers. So, okay, that, that answers all of my questions. That did probably didn't clear up anything for you, but it did for me, so.
Can you clear that GRT thing up for me, David?
Okay, well.
Sorry, but.
No, it's okay.
Remember that, when you said that GRT had been raised, but no one was using it for something, the other day? Like the rate had gone up, but no one had.
Oh, did we ever get that rate?
It's just it.
Did we get that rate adjustment off the bill based on our ordinance?
See, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
Are you ever going to do that?
It's good.
Can't do it for you. I'm going to step up a very small, go ahead.
But do you want to explain how we're going to kind of be getting an increase?
We've got a lot of.
Not just that one question, when do we get a year on that?
When do we do it, get a year on?
Yeah.
Okay, what he's asking is, in the ordinance, instead of having a seven point two five percent, uh, GRT, uh, on sale. Okay, we could have gone seven point five, because we had an ordinance in there that what had already been passed, even though it was passed back a long time ago. Okay, so, but we had to act within two months, and this was actually in y'all, not, not for years, whatever. Uh, term, yes, okay, so we didn't act that we cannot do that for another year, we could not go up to seven point five in a year. But the state went from five point one two five down to five. Okay, so they basically gave us half of that, and we have not acted on it. We actually should have dropped the seven point two five to seven point one two five, but we didn't, because we are operating, if we got five point one two five, there is a band in there that we, our one point eight local option that we add on can go up to two point oh five, I believe, remember that? Okay, we're operating in there, but we were at one point eight, well, now we've already taken on that, one point one two five. So now we're one point nine to two, so we're on this upper end here.
They dropped their.
Right, so they pushed us over here, so now anything, pretty much anything we would have to do can enact the point two five. We don't have to do anything on that, but we can't do it for a year, and we, we pretty much exhausted what we can do without going out to a, a, a vote.
So the revenue that we've talked about, we can, we'll be able to obtain that in one year from that, but we'll see.
Yes, and I would propose.
Based off the ordinance is what.
Yeah, I would propose that we look at all our, all of our ordinances and restructure them. Because that's where we've got money splitting out into. So they don't get. Lots of different specifics about where we're supposed to be using grocery receipts, and we're doing that because our grocery receipts are going in as a general fund. They're supposed to be split out, or this much goes to capital maintenance, and this much goes to streets, and this much goes to Leaden, and this much, and that hasn't been being done. Um, and so we aren't following what our ordinances are telling us to do. So we either go back to that, or we change our ordinances to reflect our practices. But if we were to go back to what our ordinances are telling us to do, now we've got less grocery receipts for general fund. And we know we can't do that, so that was why I just proposed that we, you know, basically ratify our ordinances stay at the same amount, because then we won't have to do a poll, know this and all of that. Um, knowing that we're going to be, it could be a little bit extra because of this state drop. Um, knowing that there's a cannabis tax coming in, all these sort of nuances. And then just basically saying, this is our tax, it's going to general fund. Instead of trying to specify this percentage goes to this, because we think we've got an ordinance that's, that every year it changes the amount that's supposed to be allocated. And it's, it's highly complicated and hasn't been appropriately done. But that will have, that will play anything into this if we just keep doing our general practice, which is grocery receipts goes into general.
So come Monday, we have to approve this budget, because it has to be turned in by June one.
Yes, and I can, uh, all, it, it'll be really easy for me to break out those capital purchases. I'll put them into either the COVID based on eligibility or the, um, three ninety-nine capital fund. I'll even take the COVID and the three ninety-nine and pull it below a total line on this, um, final figure, uh, sheet that you're looking at, I'll pull it down there, and then we will be just looking at expenses and revenues for operating. And then the capital stuff will come out below, and then that will satisfy the appearance that we're way under budget for, you know, these other items that we do have other funding sources for, uh, it's just right now it's rolled from my department, so per department I can pull those out really easily because of the way that I put them in, so.
And it would show a clearer picture, and then I think on outline, capital, you could include that one point four zero from the COVID, right? You could put that as a, a part of that bracket, I think.
It's right, no, it, it has its own fun, yeah, it'll have its own fun, and then anything that maybe is above the amount we have, or if we're not eligible, it will go into that, it'll go into the revenue. So, and then, you know, and, and putting in those other numbers that.
So I would create numbers that, uh, COVID, we just going to be a standing low of one point four, and that's it, this all it costs, hasn't been.
Well, I think we'd prefer to spend what's in that fund in this fiscal year, in this fiscal year.
Yeah.
If possible, um, and then next fiscal year, just start at the one point four that we're going to be getting next year, and then spend it, and do the same with the wash, like.
No, it, it could, so, I like that.
But we've got, at some point, we'll be deciding where we're going to spend it.
Yeah, no, I like that, that's what the board had before the, of the, we had to come on, we had to say that, that's just, anything left over from that one point of the fiscal year, let's go in. Spend it, but let's hold on to that one.
Right, and so those, those monies could come out of, say, if we spent it on two ambulances, then that two ambulance would come straight off this budget, and we wouldn't have to do that expense.
That was COVID money allowed to go, because I know there's certain things that it's allowed to go to.
Yes, um, so anything that's like public health and service, that's what it's geared towards, and so mostly your fire, EMS, um, police, and then wastewater is a big one. They want to make sure.
It was, it was, it was infrastructure and loss, that was the only two things that.
Right, and it's hard, that's going to be a really hard sell for us to, because you, you will literally have to.
But I'm saying that's what.
Figures to what your losses were, so.
But I'm saying that's what the doc stated, because I saw the doc, and I said, said, what are you breaking up, had four options, and now the options, we went with loss and revenue and infrastructure.
Right, and, but you have to prove it, so we won't have near the trouble with it, so for, for large municipalities or counties, they got like ten million. They have to prove of that ten how much they deserved to keep it, and everything else they sent back. So we aren't in that situation, because we didn't get that kind of money, um, so we don't really have to prove what we have, we just need to show.
Just GRT along, we show that, sometimes we got less than half GRT.
Yeah. But I think they're even wanting you to go further and spell it out.
Yeah.
More specifics, so, but luckily that's a step we won't have to take, but.
Okay, I have a question for the commissioner.
Yes.
Is everybody's confused as I am right now, because I'm a little. One of the questions that I'm having trouble with is pretty much what we were trying to, uh, explain to the commissioner again, even the twelve point eight versus the fifteen point three, okay? I don't believe that we're dealing, because the fifteen point three was total revenue that has not been, uh, that's total revenue, and there are items in there that we can't count to, towards what we're looking at, isn't that correct? Okay, the, the, uh, everything that's a fire department would receive is not.
Yes, like, can we have an up and down on this space of like every single plus and every single minus, where we can, you know? Yes, and then I'll pull the, I'll pull the two capital expenditure funds out, so you're. Well, that would be, that would be a minus, it would say it right there, and then we know it was coming out, you know? And then I'll do a column for sideways, but, um, yeah, I, I. You know, and then. I don't really know why, and because I am being conservative on the GRT could be some of it, but I don't really know why I'm showing a dish, or less revenue than what we showed to have collected this year. Unless we're missing something, and I'm hoping somebody knows what we might be missing, but. Well, you don't, on this paper here, you don't have anything, like, any money coming in for the motor vehicle, you don't have any money coming in. Yes, it's, it's in the nine point three, the top, the general fund, okay, so just everything you see that's blacked out there, those, those revenues are all captured in the general fund, yeah, they don't go to the specific departments.
But in the expenses, we don't have any utilities.
We, yes, we have utilities, um, I just haven't checked the ones that have been turned back to me, so I need to check it against our actual utility bills to make sure that it's all in there.
Okay, insurance, it's all in.
We, uh, health insurance is in there, we are right in the middle of the new liability and business and all that stuff. And I don't know when I'm succeeding that number, so that one's got me a little bit anxious, because I don't know. Again, on a, on a departmental basis, the managers provided what they thought their liability insurance was, so I do have the figures in there, but I won't be able to check it against the master policy until they've done that renewal.
On animal services, is that four point seven three, does that include the one, uh, the hundred fifty thousand on the expenses, does that include the hundred fifty thousand? On animal services, is that 4.73, does that include the 100,000 on the expenses, does that include the 100,000?
No.
So that total, total expenses for 473, or just for animal services?
And that includes an additional hire?
But I mean, I mean, I'm just saying. What a big, big.
The past years, the reason why you're thinking it's so big, it's because all of our wages were taken out of code enforcement. The code enforcement budget basically paid our wages in the animal control. This budget was just supplies and stuff, that's why there's such a great difference, is because our wages came from code enforcement.
So this is not animal services.
Correct, it pays all of our salary, that's why it's so big compared to the past.
How many does it stand?
Two. Two, and they're asking for any people, two.
So two people, I just turned, and it's taken for two people. So I'm trying to figure out how, I, I figured, I'm talking, NBD had four people, library had three, I think seniors.
My, my vacant job in the, the vet.
The vet?
Yeah.
See, and that's where.
That's the salary.
Yeah.
Should have been signed salary, but just as a department, that's a big expense.
Going back to, to management, see, when I, something like that is like, okay, where is management where to step in? And, and I know Dr. Martineau knew, but I mean, to me, when I see that figure, I'm like, wow, so they can take it. And then they did balls, if that, have that as a vet service, or do we need that service? You know, like, I'll step back and say, hey, 200,000, I, I can pay for three units for, for, for police department, you know what I mean?
Did you have to have a vet service? Did you absorb by code enforcement budget or don't, by salary laws? It's not like that's a law.
Yeah, well, what it is, is what I'm, what I'm getting at is. Versus, versus.
It's so silly, right?
What we have, what we're providing versus what the state requirement. So that's why I'm trying to balance it out, because I'll go back to what I'm telling you, I'm telling you, they're not, the, everything is going up. And, and our GRTs are going up, so we cannot be giving stuff away. I mean, nothing with Laura, nothing with nobody, nothing with the ambulance, like, I, I didn't cross them lines like that. I'm just saying, how are we going to manage more effectively? And I'm not worried about hurting anybody. If 473 balls a vet, if we don't need a vet, and we don't have a vet, because that 200,000 dollars goes somewhere else. I mean, I'll need to write a report.
No, the.
And managing that.
The salaries that are in the animal, and this is for three employees, this is replacing the one that moved to code. Salaries and all associated salary expenses is 191,000. So the difference is other expenses.
Yeah.
So vet services is 62,000. And then, there is 60,000 in there for equipment, machinery, vehicles, that puts 50.
Okay, so is that like, it comes over and runs it?
See, and that's that 120,000, right, because I know they have the equipment in there, and it's most likely. We provide them with, with computers, we provide medical equipment, we provide a lot of services in there. Not only, and then, and that's 60, 60, 60 of equipment, most likely 62, the vet service, that's 120, same.
And she gets.
And that's why I just want to bring it in, nothing that, I love animals, I love everything, but I just, we just got to figure out, the bare minimum, what, what are the state requirements to do? Because if Laura asks for a raise, and she has a big ticket for 473, I can, me, if I was a city man, I'd say, well, girl, man, I mean. Your department's, which is a big upside down when it comes to this, how can I give you a raise? Because I know when I'm, the income versus expenses, and that's all I'm going to be looking at as a commissioner. And that's why I say, going back to all this, is how are we going to better manage, the previous manager, I, he's not, I don't want to talk about nothing previous, but. The way everything was managed prior to this was not managed, I think it was more or less, I don't want to step on, I don't want to hurt nobody, I don't want to make somebody mad, because it's a small, we took 12,000. And then they should go over it, because if we continue down the same route, I guarantee you we're going to be worse off. And we just got to start now, I don't care who we step on or who we hurt, we've got to come up with a good, strong budget. And we'll pull it from here, and not worry about it, or hurting anymore, because in, in the end, heck. That's more than anything in the last two years, because COVID and everything, and I'm, and I think, here we are trying to help people, and that's what we got to return, and I'm not going to go over it.
Yeah, I'm wondering, is that just services for the animals we take in, or is that something with her?
That pays for like the rabies, the drug testing, the. It pays for, that will pay for surgeries, it'll pay for microchips, the consulting vet, the supply, the supplies for like your needles and syringes. Vaccines for vector, which is for flea and tick control, need medicine that they need if it's like amoxicillin. Any type of authentication, testing, we do know there's a distant outbreak in county, so they're, we're. South of us, so any type of testing, we've got to test animals, get them out of that health certificate, it's a word for animals to leave. And we go out of state, we are required by law to have health certificates, that comes out of it, gloves, the syringe is needed with gauze, anything like that. I mean, the stuff for washing the dogs, like if you're in surgery, once we, we start surgeries up again. Also, some of that was brought up previously in commission, that we're paying on some of the stuff, like the anesthesia machine, the maintenance, the X-ray machines. We're not paying on maintenance on anything more, because it, that's pretty much fixed too old, it died, so she ended up getting her own X-ray machine. The, the microscope, things like that that have to be done yearly, that's, and the computers that we've had to replace, that was stuff that was in a contract. Been asked to be looked at, and has not been looked at.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, it's like, like, do we get a percentage of her vet bill that she collects, and, or do we just give and give and give to her? Like, you know what I mean, like, is, should her contract?
It's right now in the negotiations.
So we should evaluate it and collect a percentage of her, her vet things that she.
The board has not even approved of a, of a new contract that they're.
And that's the contract that Patrick's looking at, correct?
No, not that one, I brought that home for commission, and nobody gave direction.
And she's running diversity, that one, is, is it the vet from diversity still?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And I think, going back to not, not only the doors department, I think across the board, we just need to do what the state requirements are.
And, and you know.
Any, we can end up.
Yeah.
It just, I just do what we're supposed to be doing, and that's it, get away from, try to do extra, because sometimes I feel, I mean, it's not even appreciated. Other than, or at least that 10% to keep smart. Something can be so appreciated, because I think I got more out there than I did the other 90%.
But I know in order for Laura to run the shelter by state law, she has to have a consulting vet. The vet actually varies for the citizens.
But a consulting vet doesn't have to be in the house.
Exactly, that's why.
They can be contracted out to somebody at a.
All around.
Well, that's why she's tried to get the commission to give her guidance on getting rid of that vet, and they haven't given her anything.
That's why that contract is not being signed, and it's being broken off the board, that's something we need to.
It's just convenient to have a vet here, I mean, we have them 20 miles away, so it's cheaper for us to just consult with Hobbs or Denver City or whatever. And not have to pay for her fee in that office and all that equipment, and, you know, that's, it's convenient, but like, you know what I mean? And if she's not giving us a percentage of her appointments or whatever to help us on our end, she's got to pay the deal. So that does need to be wished in. Okay, please, just one.
Kennedy, Mr. Commission, could you share with the, with the commission, the timeframe, what we're looking at this month? Approval budget, entry into DFA, can you just?
So I'm, I'm currently in the process, I had requested a budget schedule from Michael Frey, in turn with the DFA. And we're actually on track, because the final budget needs to be approved in the last. Mission meeting prior to June 1. So I'll have from Monday 9 until June 1, I think it's what, 6, it's the stage or something, to do the input. And so all I have to do is, is input it into. LGBMS during that time, and then I will spend the month of June getting our system to reflect the, the budget. So I can do our system input during the month of June. So I'm not facing any terrible deadlines on that. We've got some work to do still to fill in some blanks on these numbers, to get you a final budget for next week. But I'll do what's suggested on this final recap page, and give it a little bit more detail. And I think, make it a little more understanding, but. You know, I, I don't feel it's going to change a whole lot between now and then. Certainly within the. Number that I had given, so, but really, at this point, I'm going to be moving money around, adding or taking a whole lot of this. Then you can make a wide-eyed decision on these separate funds, I guess. I mean, you've got the, you've got, you've got it in the current state now, the printouts, if you wanted to, to kind of study it, see if there's something that, that you feel it needs cutting. There should be pretty good explanation in the descriptions. Oh gosh, I don't know if to get printed those for y'all, do you have a description column? Or does it just end with the budget number? On, on any of your papers, not that one, but your.
A lot of them have descriptions.
Okay, yeah, so that, that's trying to give you an idea of what's in that figure. You know, but if you're seeing something that, you know, that's a little bit too high, is there something we can do to cut it? Then we can obviously do that, and try and bring these numbers down. But the big movement's going to be pulling these capital expenditures out, and putting them in a separate place. And then, then again, that will be easy for you to decide, you know, this department needs this piece of equipment, this department. Needs a used piece of equipment versus new, those sort of things.
Dr. Martin, what is your expectation for presenting Monday night? Give me your, what you foresee being able to present to us Monday night. For us to try to make a decision on that.
So Mr. Mayor, commission, I think the first thing is, Commissioner Gandy mentioned, we need a total amount, what's that total? Overall budget, or total amount? I anticipate that we're going to have to cut. So where is it that we're going to cut? I know in the proposal, we're looking at 6, 7, 8, 9 additional personnel. Six in the fire department, two in the police department, and one in animal services. So the request is for nine personnel, are we going to cut the nine, reduce the nine? Like Commissioner Treille said, all the capital outlay, the two ambulances, police cars, vehicle. So we need to decide, well, bottom line is, we're going to have to cut, but I anticipate by Monday, she'll have a total amount. And then, do I need to cut each department?
And our, the budget we present can be amended.
Correct.
So I think we, we definitely need to have a total revenue.
Total revenue, okay.
Now, total projected revenue, as conservative as you feel possible, okay? That way, we know about it. Then we need an operations budget. I would show maybe a current operations budget, then show what the effect of adding personnel into these departments, what affected. Then we can look at. All of the, in all departments, and then we can look at capital requests. And see how those affect, so that we can work towards getting a balanced budget to submit to the, to DFA. That we can then go back and amend if we so need. We can add revenue if we see that we're going to be adding revenue, or we can add expenses or. And we don't have to amend it, we can, again, we can just say, we're going to buy things, but if we're going to amend personnel or whatever. I think we would have to amend revenue and expenses based on personnel or things that are like that. I don't know what they require. And then, when we, basically, when we have all of that, then we can establish, okay, we're, you know, we're going to. Put so much towards all of the items that are needed to operate all of the departments. Other than that, I don't know, at this point, a different direction to go, because we've got to have a balanced budget to submit. We have to have something to be able to, that makes sense.
I think going back to the frozen decision versus, like, let's say, for instance, you're in your sector, fire and ambulance. There's three that are not frozen, and that's possibly what we definitely need to prevent. And the frozen ones, we can remain frozen until we see that later on, and it's vital that we at least bring that ship back on. And going back to your overtime, you know, we have to have that ship, and that ship that are offset overtime. In fact, we stayed in the same, to random, from a frozen position. The only way, the only reason we made adjustments in them to departments was to accommodate their, their, their pay rate. Because if we didn't pull three more people off their, their, their guys, they'd get cut paid, they, they want to keep the same amount paid, they're going to work double to keep from having to. Be paid, but I was like, now it's a thing in overtime, so it's, it's not, it's not helping us now, so we need to all say this, we need to hard this, go back to management.
Correct.
Do you turn down rents because you don't have enough personnel? Like transfers?
Sometimes we have to, yes. Well, we won't turn them down, but we'll tell them, you'll have to wait, you know. Four, six hours, depending on how many they have lined up. Say every now and then, they'll call, like, say Clovis or somebody, an outside agency to facilitate that, because it can't wait. And, I mean, we can only facilitate what we can. So we even sometimes, since all of our patients are COVID tested and everything, if they're negative. All the patients are negative tests, and we'll haul two patients at one time in one ambulance, so.
Didn't know if that would be some revenue there.
It is, so, but it's, I mean, we, very, very so.
Mr. Mayor, commission, the other decision we need to make is, will we continue to fund EDC? I know in the past, we paid them 50,000, Main Street, 35,000, and the Chamber, 35,000, I think 20 for the museum. And the reason why I bring that up is, I, I've received emails, phone calls, if we're going to continue to fund organizations, so that's another decision we'll have to make.
If I'm not mistaken, I know on like Main Street, due to our population size, there's a set amount of money that we have to fund for this thing. If I'm not mistaken, I do know that one, the, the Chamber, I don't know, the museum, I like the place, even though I don't go. And the EDC, that's also something that's.
Both of them, Main Street and EDC are both.
I'm thinking so, yeah, so.
And you can use EDC monies on like some of your road things and stuff like that, if you ask them, and they'll agree to it. And it's a place you can put money, the state can't pull it back out.
Correct.
It's safe there.
So, but I don't remember what those dollar figures are on that, so.
Yeah, 35,000 on, on the Main Street, and the 20, I don't know, the other 50 is also ordinance, that's why we never can deduct it unless we change the order up for EDC. That, we can change the ordinance on that, knock it down to 35, we can even cross where everybody gets 35, there's no discussion on that. But we have to change ordinance, and that would be ratified. Like, traditionally ratified to, to men, 35 across the board, not everybody feels like. Because they're all separate. Because they're all separate entities of the city, other than that, it is state tax. Tax appears money that goes to EDC. We as a board make this fine decision.
But they also, they also perform certain tasks and different things for us that, you know. So that needs to be considered also.
Do you have a professional agreement?
Yep. So.
The museum is just utilities and such, there's no other expenses, but that's our building, the way I understand it. So that's not something that necessarily a professional service agreement I've dotted as it's part of the, of the department that we're calling community centers. The theater, there's, there's monies in the theater for what it would look like to get it back up in operation. So really the only department that I've kept that I've just zeroed out is the swimming pool department. But I have expenses listed in teen, um, theater. And the Harris Center is just utilities. It's kind of clogged webbed, but it still takes a lot of utilities.
And I'm glad you brought that up because I know Maddox Foundation is interested in the youth center and also in the theater. And, um, so this, so on one hand, we continue to put money into both facilities or directly negotiate with Maddox Foundation. Now, an email was sent out yesterday where I need to get Patrick involved or Maddox Foundation and Main Street would want the theater at like a donation. But I don't think we could do that legally. I don't know if we could just.
It's historical, so that, all that.
Yeah, Patrick's gonna have to get him to get that.
I don't, because they're not governmental, we can't do.
Right, anti-donation.
And we would have to probably go out of, of the bid. Now, you, what's been done in the past is they do a point system where, uh, you can, the value of their bid is offset by what they're going to bring. I mean, as far as economic or also service efficiency. So they wouldn't have to be the highest bidder, but we would have to have a point system.
Correct.
And, uh, the other, after meeting with them, and I know you've got to say, man, but the capital outlay that we have in place that they put in for the funding of, would have, it has to be done by the city. So not only would we have to, we, we paid 249,000, I believe, that was the number I had planned far several years ago. They've got $250,000 worth of capital outlay that was spent by the government there. We would have to, as a city, would have to do the improvements. And then negotiate at that point, whether it's for the, just those improvements that we would have to redo or more than that or less than that or whatever. But, and I know there, there's a lot of other talk about that in a different direction, but we would definitely, because they're non-governmental, we cannot just do it.
Right.
So that's gonna be an ongoing project to try to get it done, yes.
When the theater was running good and everything, did it pay for itself? Was it worth it?
It was almost operating at loss. Just like the swimming pool.
But not near the loss of the swimming pool. It was, it was a justifiable loss, but.
And I think what it is also with the theater is just, needs a new roof, needs all this stuff. And that's why they were looking at, hey, why don't we just take it over? You guys give it to us because it's gonna cost 250,000 just to renovate. To where it's under spent, to operate. If the city, city willing to just keep it and try to fix it somehow or live, or just wants to go ahead.
About the monies that, that for the marquee?
Yeah.
If we still have it all.
We still have the money.
Can we do some kind of fundraiser for it? Like a historical building fundraiser for it?
We, we could, we could move forward and spend the 250,000 on the marquee or reauthorize the funds.
Is it these new roof, I don't know. Sort of lines are all for that.
The numbers that I was provided are. So 413 total for the theater, marquee 167, room 70, plumbing 100, HVAC 76. So, and then that doesn't include operation expenses. So that's got the community center and apartment at 458,000.
I guess, you know, under negotiations, the youth center and the theater right now. Tell them further negotiations because it comes out through the, uh, with the youth.
The Maddox Foundation did hire someone to look at our HVAC system at the youth center to see if it was really purchasing. But definitely Patrick would have to get involved in all this.
And we had spent 50-some-thousand last year on that HVAC system. It showed up on the capital, um, for the audit, they were asking for, uh, they were basically trying to figure depreciation. There was a capital expenditure on that building, so.
For 50? See that, I think we got like the. I think the only thing we ever did on that was just let them V C.
Yeah, as Mark said, that there was the heater, it was the heater really. But 50,000, he should have been new. So it was 42, 809 to fix the existing heater. That was spent on December 4th, 2020. He needs to not get caught.
50,000 for that? That's an outcry decision, no one, because they only had one unit that was out for the big room. That's all it was there going.
I believe they checked the, um, the gym as well, that's why too. I think they checked, because there were some complaints about the gym system as well. So was it just the one fall?
It was a service call. It was not a.
Included with that 50.
Wasn't a repair.
Not like a. Simply a repair.
Yes. They should have, maybe you should get a new unit for this.
That, that premise, we should have had a.
Brand new.
RFP and all that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I thought it was just a repair.
Maybe it's in the title somewhere.
Yeah, I think so, because that's all it came out as, just a repair.
Didn't, they pulled the invoice and they wanted an explanation for it because they were trying to add to our fixed asset listing and then depreciate it. And so I, they gave me a list here that I had to go and, you know, investigate. And Star said that those were HVAC repairs, heater mainly on the youth center building. And so, yeah, there are check numbers and invoices to back that up.
Actually, never, it was just, uh, yeah, it should have been, that, that's all the request. It was just maintenance, but it would have been something like, like. Mr. Gandy said something that Rain could have given.
When was that, like that occurred?
2020.
Oh, 2020.
Yeah, it was on last month, so that's why.
2021, I think, but 2020, so that was.
In the 20, yeah.
2020, they replaced.
Changes.
They replaced air conditioners.
I thought it was like, I thought that was last year. That's what I was saying, I said, the only thing she ever said is she just needed maintenance. And I said, yeah, just pull some maintenance.
No, I see a couple, couple of P O's. Yeah, last.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, my recommendation, and if the, if the commission and the mayor agree to this, is that myself and the mayor meet with Ms. Kennedy Monday morning. That gives her plenty of time to prepare. We can meet with her Monday morning to finalize everything so that it can be presented at 5:30 that day, if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor. We can, that would give her some time to put everything together.
Yeah.
And then we can meet with her Monday morning, go over the numbers and make sure that everything's ready to go to present to, to the board.
If possible, if we could get it out and get it to everyone prior to, if we could, at least everybody look at it a little bit in front of you get into.
If, if, then again, if, if we can have it ready by, to this Friday, so that everyone has it for the weekend. Can we do that? Kennedy, can you?
Yeah, it's gonna be long.
So we can meet with you, myself and the mayor, mayor, Friday at, let's see, at, it was at 10, about 11 o'clock?
That's a good time.
Friday, 11 o'clock? And so then we'll have, if we meet at 11 o'clock, we'll have everything ready to give to the commission that day.
Yeah, we could make adjustments on the fly and I'll just have this spreadsheet.
Can you just give it to us like 3:00, 3:30, where we have an hour or so, you know, and. Well, I'm talking Monday, like I need all weekend to look over it. You know, just whenever you go over with Robbie in your meeting, like have it just since. Monday mornings.
Unless Monday morning to give time to get.
That way you're not stuck here all.
I mean, Friday morning.
I don't need anything on a Friday. Because it's gonna go. Exactly, I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna look at it Monday morning.
You're a good guy.
So there's no reason.
I like it's a big number and the big number and the big number, but.
So 11 o'clock on Friday. All right.
Exactly.
Right, Friday.
Okay.
Any further questions, discussions, staff, anybody? Oh. I feel like she's answered a lot of questions. Mr. Sergeant, do you have anything you would like to?
Just that the numbers you see on this page is, is 205,000. State is gonna give me on top of the, what's it? Yeah, there's a couple managers, but I'm still wanting to kind of sit down with and go over it just one last time to do some confirmation and things. And I went off of the last year's, what the state gave me last year because I don't have those numbers yet. There wasn't one of those numbers now. So it could be up or down compared, depending on what we get.
The, the 205, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy, anything first?
That's it?
Back to the drawing board.
May she? Yes, we have read this, we're. Everybody good?